Right. I'd like to call to order the meeting of the City of Lake Forest Community High School, District 115, Special Board Meeting of the Board of Education, the School Board Election and Reorganization. May I have a roll call, please? Ms. Barrett?
Mrs. Snoblan? Here. Mr. Edson?
Here.
Mr. Block?
Here.
Mr. Scribner?
Here.
Mr. Bergner?
Here.
Ms. Golan?
Here. Okay, let's see. At this time, I would like to ask the Board to review the abstract of votes in their packet and then make a motion for approval.
I move that Lake Forest High School, District 115, Board of Education, accept and approve the abstract of votes of the April 9, 2013 election as presented.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. May I have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Block?
Aye.
Mrs. Snoblan?
Aye.
Mr. Edson?
Aye.
Mr. Kerry?
Aye.
Mr. Scribner?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next is the motion to approve the resolution authorizing the election of new board members. And I'll read that resolution. Whereas there has been presented to this Board of Education and duly filed with the Secretary thereof, the report of the judges of the annual election held in and for school District 115 on Tuesday, April 9, 2013, and the report of the Lake County canvassing Board, which reports show that had at said election, seventy-two thousand eight hundred four ballots were cast in Lake County and, whereas votes cast for members of the Board of Education, District 115 are Todd Bergner, two thousand three hundred twenty-one, John Powers, two thousand two hundred eighty-six, Dave Schreiber, two thousand two hundred seventy, Robert Ted Mormon, two thousand two hundred forty-seven, Steve Reimer, two thousand one hundred twenty-three, whereas four candidates shall be seated with four-year terms. It is therefore, is hereby resolved and declared by this Board of Education of School District 115, Lake County, Illinois, that Todd Bergner, Dave Schreiber, John Powers, and Ted Mormon have been elected members of said Board of Education. Is there a motion to approve this resolution? Is there a second?
Second.
May I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Kerry?
Aye.
Mr. Bergner?
Aye.
Mr. Block?
Aye.
Mr. Edson?
Aye.
Mrs. Snoblan?
Aye.
Mr. Scribner?
Aye.
Mrs. Golan?
Aye. Motion carries. At this time, I will be administering the oath of office to the newly-elected school Board members. If I could have those people go up to the podium, please, including Mr. Bergner. Cheat, cheat. All right, if you would raise your right hand, please. Aye, and state your name.
Robert Mormon.
Dave Schreiber.
Do solemnly swear-
Do solemnly swear.
-that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office-
That I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office-
...of member of the Board of Education of Lake Forest High School, District Number 115-
Member of the Board of Education of Lake Forest High School, District 115.
...in accordance with the Constitution of the United States-
In accordance with the Constitution of the United States.
...the Constitution of the State of Illinois-
Constitution of the State of Illinois.
...and the laws of the State of Illinois-
And the laws of the State of Illinois.
...to the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
I further swear that-
I further swear that-
...I shall respect taxpayer interests by serving as a faithful protector of the school district's assets.
I shall respect taxpayer interests by serving as a faithful protector of the school district's assets.
I shall encourage and respect the free expression of opinion-
I shall encourage and respect the free expression of opinion.
...by my fellow board members and others-
By my fellow board members and others.
...who seek a hearing before the Board-
Who seek a hearing before the Board.
...while respecting the privacy-
While respecting the privacy.
...of students and employees.
Of students and employees.
I shall recognize-
I shall recognize-
...that a board member has no legal authority-
That a board member has no legal authority.
...as an individual-
As an individual.
...and that decisions can be made only-
And that decisions can be made only.
...by a majority vote at a public board meeting.
By a majority vote at a public board meeting.
And I shall abide-
And I shall abide.
...by majority decisions of the Board-
By majority decisions of the Board.
...while retaining the right to seek changes-
While retaining the right to seek changes.
...in such decisions-
In such decisions.
...through ethical and constructive channels.
Through ethical and constructive channels.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you.
At this time, I would like a motion for this current school board to adjourn sine die.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. The current school board adjourns.
I'd like to call to order the meeting of Lake Forest School District 115 High School This is a time when we need to, as a board, appoint a president pro tem. I'll serve until such time as the president pro tem has been selected. This does not necessarily have to be the future president. It can be anyone that will then run the meeting until the president is selected. Do you have a motion for president pro tem?
I move that we appoint Todd Bergner pro tem, president pro tem.
Do you need a second?
Second.
Second. Discussion? Okay, roll call, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Block?
Aye.
Mrs. Snoblan?
Aye.
Mr. Edson?
Aye.
Mr. Schreiber?
Aye.
Mr. Bergner?
Aye.
Mr. Powers?
Mr. Mormon?
Aye.
Now lost the rush of power.
And so now we need to have a motion for the election of Board of Education officers. May I have a motion?
Are we looking for-
Okay, nomination for the president, please.
I'm pleased to nominate Todd Bergner to be president of Lake Forest High School, District 115.
I second.
And we do a voice vote? Is that right? All in favor, say aye.
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 Would like now to take the opportunity to nominate Dick Block for the Vice President of the Board of Education. First, a second?
Second.
Second.
And a voice vote, please, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And finally, is there a nomination for the election of Secretary to the Board of Education?
I'd like to nominate Nikki Snoblan.
Second?
Second.
And a voice vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And now we move on to the action items and approval of outgoing Board of Member Resolutions. For this piece, I'm going to step over to the podium and share these accolades and seek the approval of these resolutions. Now, we're going to go through one at a time and have each of you come up as a finish with each of yours and give each an opportunity to say some final words if you choose. This is where we learn how big the shoes are that we have to fill here and what great work has been done on which we'll be able to build over the next years. So begin with John Scribner. Whereas John Scribner has faithfully served Lake Forest High School and its students with dedication as a member of the Board of Education of School District 115 since 2007, and whereas he was a member of the Joint Shared Services Committee from 2009 to 2013, and was charged with implementing the 2004 Shared Services Agreement and with creating the process for reporting proposed joint projects to each of the participating school boards for their approval. And whereas he served on the Finance Committee to ensure oversight to all major district revenues, expenses, and investment policies, and provided sound leadership as the district navigated an unprecedented financial environment and ensured a steady course on the path to black. And whereas John served twice as a member of a team that greatly facilitated the negotiating process, which resulted in a fair and equitable contract between the Board of Education and the LFVA in 2011, and served countless hours during the contract negotiations and during an unprecedented teacher's strike in 2012, to once again produce a successful contract. And whereas his commitment to his responsibilities as a board member and the Lake Forest High School students, his unwavering leadership, financial insight, and calm demeanor are appreciated by his fellow board members and the District 115 community that he has served. Therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Education of Lake Forest High School, District 115, does express for itself as well as for the parents, the students, the staff, and the citizens of Lake Forest, Lake Bluff, and Knollwood, its sincere appreciation and gratitude to John Scribner for all he has done to advance the quality of education in our communities. Adopted this seventh day of May in 2013.
When I was handing out all those diplomas for six years, I was always, that's right, left-handed. I screwed it up. After six years, I screwed it up.
All I want to say is that it was an honor and a privilege to serve on this Board of Education. I feel, I have a great deal of respect and admiration for every single member of this Board. They all served selflessly and cohesively. We didn't always agree, but we always ended up agreeing. We went through some difficult times, went through some difficult moments, and came out of it, I think, a better, better school district and a better community. And for that, I'm quite proud. Thank you.
Move on to Jim Kerry. Whereas Jim Kerry has faithfully served Lake Forest High School and its students with dedication as a member of the Board of Education of School District 115 since 2006, and whereas he served as Vice President to the Board and performed this function in a most able fashion, and whereas he was a member of the Education Committee from 2006 to 2007, and provided oversight to major district educational initiatives, new programs, and made recommendations to the Board of Education on major topics or matters related to curriculum and instruction. And whereas during Jim's tenure, the district created a long-range plan, and the community overwhelmingly endorsed it by a two-to-one margin on November 7, 2006, to keep Lake Forest High School academically competitive with other high-performing schools, to meet current and projected enrollment needs, and address safety and security concerns, to transfer more athletic and administrative functions to West Campus, to make room for an improved academic program at East Campus, and minimize financial impact on the taxpayer by funding the plan with no projected tax rate increase. And whereas he served as the Chairman of the Finance Committee to ensure oversight to all major district revenues, expenses, and investment policies, and provided sound leadership as the district navigated an unprecedented financial environment and ensured a steady course on the path to black. And whereas John served twice as a member of a team that greatly facilitated the negotiating process, which resulted in a fair and equitable contract between the Board of Education and the LFVA in 2011, and served countless hours during the contract negotiations and during an unprecedented teacher's strike in 2012, to once again produce a successful contract. And whereas his commitment to his responsibilities as a board member and the Lake Forest High School students, his unwavering leadership, financial insight, and calm demeanor are appreciated by his fellow board members and the District 115 community that he has served. Therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Education of Lake Forest High School, District 115, does express for itself as well as for the parents, the students, the staff, and the citizens of Lake Forest, Lake Bluff, and Knollwood, its sincere appreciation and gratitude to John Scribner for all he has done to advance the quality of education in our communities. Adopted this seventh day of May in 2013.
When I was handing out all those diplomas for six years, I was always, that's right, left-handed. I screwed it up. After six years, I screwed it up.
All I want to say is that it was an honor and a privilege to serve on this Board of Education. I feel, I have a great deal of respect and admiration for every single member of this Board. They all served selflessly and cohesively. We didn't always agree, but we always ended up agreeing. We went through some difficult times, went through some difficult moments, and came out of it, I think, a better, better school district and a better community. And for that, I'm quite proud. Thank you.
Move on to Jim Kerry. Whereas Jim Kerry has faithfully served Lake Forest High School and its students with dedication as a member of the Board of Education of School District 115 since 2006, and whereas he served as Vice President to the Board and performed this function in a most able fashion, and whereas he was a member of the Education Committee from 2006 to 2007, and provided oversight to major district educational initiatives, new programs, and made recommendations to the Board of Education on major topics or matters related to curriculum and instruction. And whereas during Jim's tenure, the district created a long-range plan, and the community overwhelmingly endorsed it by a two-to-one margin on November 7, 2006, to keep Lake Forest High School academically competitive with other high-performing schools, to meet current and projected enrollment needs, and address safety and security concerns, to transfer more athletic and administrative functions to West Campus, to make room for an improved academic program at East Campus, and minimize financial impact on the taxpayer by funding the plan with no projected tax rate increase. And whereas he served as the Chairman of the Finance Committee to ensure oversight to all major district revenues, expenses, and investment policies, and provided sound leadership as the district remained on a steady course on the path to black. And whereas Jim served three times as a member of a team that greatly facilitated the negotiating process, which resulted in a fair and equitable contract between the Board of Education and LFVA in 2007 and 2011, and served countless hours during the contract negotiations and during the unprecedented teacher's strike in 2012, to once again produce a successful contract. And whereas his commitment to his responsibilities as a board member and the Lake Forest High School students, his unwavering leadership, financial insight, and wry sense of humor are appreciated by his fellow board members and the District 115 community that he has served. Therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Education of Lake Forest High School, District 115, does express for itself as well as the parents, the students, the staff, and the citizens of Lake Forest, Lake Bluff, and Knollwood, its sincere appreciation and gratitude to Jim Kerry for all that he has done to advance the quality of education in our communities. Adopted this seventh day of May, 2013.
It's heavy. I think I might be a fruitcake. Thanks very much. I'm not sure where most of that stuff got conceived, but it's been an eight-year term. An awful lot's been done. We talked about it outside beforehand, that when Sharon and I came on the Board, this building was on the target to be knocked down because it was obsolete, et cetera. And for those of you who drive by here, any one of seven days a week, you see the level of activity by all facets of the community. I think in many ways, that's probably one of the proudest moments of my eight years on the Board. An awful lot of good people who have done all the work, and some of us get to steal or take credit for it, but the staff and the administration just does a superb job. And the only comment I would make for the new board members is it's tougher than you think. It's easier on the outside to be critical, but you will find that you've got a group of team members who will work with you as a team, value your input, value your disagreement, but ultimately, you will work together as a team, as we did. And in looking back at eight years, as John said, there were times when we didn't agree, but we worked through those things, and I'm very proud of the decisions that came out of those healthy discussions. So, thank you very much, and good luck.
What happened to that wry sense of humor? I was hoping for so much more. And last, but certainly not least, Sharon Golan. Whereas Sharon Golan has faithfully served Lake Forest High School and its students with dedication as a member of the Board of Education of School District 115 since 2005, and served as President of the Board from 2010 to 2013, and performed this function in a most able fashion and provided sound knowledge, leadership. And whereas she served on the Operations Committee from 2005 to 2007, and provided a community perspective, direction, and oversight of district operations in the areas of transportation, building and grounds, and food services. And whereas Sharon was a member of the Joint Shared Services Committee, serving from 2005 to 2013, and was charged with implementing the 2004 Shared Services Agreement and with creating the process for reporting proposed joint projects to each of the participating school boards for their approval. And whereas she served on the Illinois Association of School Boards from 2005 to 2007, and was dedicated to strengthening our public schools and excellence in school governance, to support quality public education. And whereas during Sharon's tenure, the district created a long-range plan, and the community overwhelmingly endorsed it by a two-to-one margin on November 7, 2006, to keep Lake Forest High School academically competitive with other high-performing schools, to meet current and projected enrollment needs, and address safety and security concerns, to transfer more athletic and administrative functions to West Campus, to make room for an improved academic program at East Campus, and minimize financial impact on taxpayers by funding the plan with no projected tax rate increase. And whereas she served as a liaison to the City of Lake Forest from 2007 to 2013, to explore and implement areas of shared services, and to foster and improve working relations to create enhanced shared benefits to both organizations and the taxpayers. And whereas Sharon served on the Tri-District Committee from 2010 to 2013, to ensure a continued coordinated drive to offer the highest quality of education to children in Lake Bluff, Lake Forest, and Knollwood, and a closer, more collaborative working relationship among the communities of three school districts. And whereas she served on the Policy Committee from 2010 to 2013, and spent countless hours to ensure the district was up to date and comprehensive in scope in all of its school policies, and was instrumental in presenting the Board Policy Manual that was adopted in 2010. And whereas, excuse me, whereas Sharon served as a member of the negotiations team and served countless hours through the contract negotiations process, and during an unprecedented teacher's strike in 2012, to produce a fair and equitable contract. And whereas Sharon's unwavering commitment to her responsibilities as a board member and the Lake Forest High School students, her exemplary leadership during turbulent times, countless hours of service, her sense of humor, are appreciated by her fellow board members and the District 115 community that she served. Therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Education of Lake Forest High School, District 115, does express for itself as well as the parents, the students, the staff, and the citizens of Lake Forest, Lake Bluff, and Knollwood, its sincere appreciation and gratitude to Sharon Golan for all she has done to advance the quality of education in our communities. Adopted this seventh day of May in 2013.
We were afraid they'd run out of presents after the District 67 meeting, but they didn't. Thank you very much. Those are very kind words. People often say that this is a thankless job, and I have to say that those people are completely wrong. This job is about the students, about the children of Lake Forest, and I am proud to have served on their behalf. I'm proud to have served with a remarkable staff of professionals at the high school and in central administration. I'm really proud to have served with Jim and John, and I'm only sorry that the new folk don't have an opportunity to work with them because they really were the backbone of this organization the past few years. Calm, and witty, and bright, and I will miss working with them. Interchangeable. Again, thank you so much. It's been a pleasure, and I wish you all well in the future.
And so, is there a motion to approve those resolutions that were just read?
So moved.
Second.
Does it say all in favor, or a roll call? A roll call, please.
Mrs. Snoblan?
Aye.
Mr. Block?
Aye.
Mr. Edson?
Aye.
Mr. Kerry?
Oh.
Mr. Scribner?
Sorry, whole list.
I have it.
Okay, we'll try again. Mrs. Snoblan?
Still aye.
Mr. Edson?
Aye.
Mr. Mormon?
Aye.
Mr. Block?
Aye.
Mr. Scriber?
Aye.
Mr. Bergner?
Aye.
Motion's approved. Our final action item is an approval of the 2013-2014 board meeting dates, list of which were included in your files. Is there a motion?
I move that the Lake Forest High School, District 115, Board of Education, approve the 2013-2014 calendar as presented.
Second.
And a roll call? Vote, please.
Mrs. Snoblan?
Aye.
Mr. Edson?
Aye.
Mr. Kerry?
Oh.
Mr. Scribner?
Sorry, whole list.
I have it.
Okay, we'll try again. Mrs. Snoblan?
Still aye.
Mr. Edson?
Aye.
Mr. Mormon?
Aye.
Mr. Block?
Aye.
Mr. Scriber?
Aye.
Mr. Bergner?
Aye.
Motion's approved. of which were included in your files. Is there a motion?
I move that the Lake Forest High School, District 115, Board of Education, approve the 2013-2014 calendar as presented.
Second.
And a roll call? Vote, please.
Mrs. Snoblan?
Aye.
Mr. Edson?
Aye.
Mr. Mormon?
Aye.
Mr. Block?
Aye.
Mr. Scriber?
Aye.
Mr. Bergner?
Aye.
Motion carries. And finally, a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
We are adjourned. Thank you. Motion carries. And finally, a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
We are adjourned. Thank you. I, you know, I was waiting to see who was going to take over. Dick grabbed it. Yeah.